Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the August 20th, 2014 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. And would you join us?
I've read this over two or three times.
In a moment of silence, please.
The agenda's in here. Get out of here. I won't do it.
Thank you. We have some minutes. Whoop. Okay. We need to adopt the agenda, which has not changed.
Madam Chair, will we adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And now we have minutes for July the 16th.
Madam Chair, will we adopt the minutes of July 16th, 2014?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is our time for committee reports? I think I have three. The Transportation Committee, was that rescheduled?
It was, but we have met. We had a few items on the agenda. One was a request for a blind child at play sign. The committee felt that since it was on a cul-de-sac already, and I guess researchers found when those go up, after a while people become desensitized to them, ignore them. So they felt it wasn't a good use of funds to put one up. Then the other was a report by VDOT about House Bill 2 where money for projects such as 277 has been pulled into one big chunk down at Richmond and will be sent out to projects, I guess as they see fit. So it may be some time before 277 takes off again. They're going to set up a list of criteria that'll come out, I believe in November, of how they'll rank the projects. So just because a project's funded now doesn't mean it's funded. It did not apply to bridges. And then the last thing was just an update on the six-year road plan from VDOT of what they've got scheduled for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Unger, the Sanitation Authority?
Yes, ma'am. We met yesterday evening. Total customer base for water is 14,124. Sanitation is 13,639. The current rainfall for the month of July was just about three and a half inches. It was up about an inch from last month, which was a good thing. The production for the deal plant, we drew 2.6 million gallon per day. And for the Anderson plant, it was 1.6 million gallon. The city, we purchased about a million and a half gallon per day, which is about 3/4 of a million more than we've been purchasing from the city. So that was up quite a bit. Daily average was 5.5 and 1/2 million gallon per day. And that's was almost 6 million gallon prior month. So that was down just a little bit, but not a lot. The deal plant's elevation was exactly the same as it was last month. So that's a good thing. The Anderson was down about 3 feet, which was kind of normal because they pull a lot more water out of that than they usually have been. They're still having some problem with nitrogen at the Parker's Mill plant. And that's basically coming from Hoods putting more nitrogen than they should be there. So they're still dealing with that. And then the water leaks, they did correct a lot of water leaks this past month. They were at 17% on the water leakies, and they got it down to 5. They found some major leaks in the system, so that's a real good thing for them. And the last thing they talked about was the problems they're having in Frederictown with, when they get real bad floods, they're going to try to do some things like possibly smoke tests. They're putting meters on different places to see where the flow is at and, you know, what they can do to fix that. And they did vote at the end to do some corrections to the Stevens Run. So hopefully they'll get some things resolved over Stevens City. That was it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome Mark Loring from the City of Winchester, who's here to give us a report on their doing. So welcome, Mark.
Great, thank you. Last night, we held our monthly meeting. We had seven public hearings, approved all of them. I'll highlight just two. The first, from Verizon, they requested a conditional use permit to put new telecommunications facilities on top of the George Washington Hotel. They'll take off the existing Nextel devices that are up there. The second that I'll highlight is the conditional use permit for the city to actually to replace the communication tower at the Public Safety Center. They're going to put up a 150-foot tower. There's an 85-foot tower there now. And we had three administrative approvals and I'll highlight just one. And that's the site plan for the new cancer center at the hospital.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Hess from the Board of Supervisors.
Yes. The Board of Supervisors met last Wednesday, August 13th, and we had a total of five items, action items, that had previously been on the Planning Commission's agenda. And that included three amendments to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Each of those amendments for the McCann Slaughter property, service to expanding the Swazza in Middletown, north of the Lord Fairfax Community College, and expanding the Swazza east of 81 at Middletown. Those were all approved unanimously. The rezoning of Copperwood FEMA area was also approved unanimously. And then the last item, action item related to the Planning Commission was the request of a waiver for private roads for the Lake Frederick subdivision, and that was also approved.
Thank you very much. While we're on the subject of committees, I would like to appoint Robbie Robert Moulden to the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee. And I'm sure that you will add a great deal, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This is the time on our agenda when, if there are any citizens in the audience who would like to address us on any subject other than a public hearing. Come.
John Goodstone, Wall District, and a member of the Business Friendly Committee. I want to thank you for the opportunity for Ty Lawson, Bruce Carpenter, and myself to meet with the Development Review and Regulations Committee in April to discuss the landscape ordinance. The changes you will be discussing later this evening are only of little help. Various things are unaddressed, and here are just a couple of examples. We're still in a situation with the current ordinance, and as no change proposed, de minimis changes to a site, we cannot waive, or the planning director cannot waive getting into this ordinance. And that, there were some changes related to it, but it generated a description of what is in a minor site plan. Doesn't say you can waive anything. And that's 16 items there describing what a minor site plan requires. Doesn't say, and my favorite example is 100-square-foot air compressor shed that you'd like to put on the side of a 200,000-square-foot factory. Eric Lawrence does not have the authority to waive the landscape ordinance for such a small change. That's the equivalent to any one of us going to the grocery store merely wanting one loaf of bread and getting up to the checkout counter and having the clerk say, "Can't do this. You need to walk up and down every aisle in the store before I can check you out." This is a poor use of both public and private resources. A second thing, the massive amount of plant materials required. I didn't see that addressed at all. I think it's all still there. I said, and I want to make a correction. Last time I spoke to you about this, I said that this is not a public safety issue, this ordinance. It's a cosmetic issue. I want to correct that for two reasons. One, during the meeting that we had with the DRC, one of the members of that committee, Whit Wagner, mentioned that there needed to be some concern about the amount of plant material placed in close proximity to food-grade buildings. These are food processors or warehouses where food products are stored. I didn't see where that was addressed at all in the changes. But that was a member of the DRC speaking about that. The second thing is a personal experience of about two weeks ago. I was on a piece of private property, another driving my car, another car on another piece of private property, that has one of these little connectors, which you can find a lot of places in Frederick County. So we weren't on VDOT right away, but we had a near miss of, you know, like this. Thank goodness for good braking systems. Can't fault the other driver who had the stop sign because the thickness of the plant materials there had actually grown in behind the sign. There was a wall of material there that you could not see through at all. His sight distance, when properly stopped at the stop sign, was no more than from where I'm standing to that wall behind you. And I just don't think that's adequate at all. Furthermore, in the very few occasions where I would like to be a defensive driver, that's particularly if I'm driving somebody else's vehicle, I couldn't see the car coming because I couldn't see through the massive material either. So I think that we do have public safety issues as a result of the intensity and the needless extent of the ordinance, which is what we've been talking about now for months. Hope that you can do something more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak with us regarding anything but the public hearing? Okay. Thank you very much. Our first item is a comp plan amendment, and it is the Frederick County Public Schools' Sew and Water Service Area Adjustment. The request is for consideration of an amendment to the Sew and Water Service Area to serve the proposed fourth high school of approximately 83 acres. The property is located adjacent to and east of Admiral Richard E. Byrd Middle and Evendale Elementary Schools and is identified by property identification number 76-A-96E in the Shawnee Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The introduction explains this relatively straightforward amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. And of course, the Long Range Land Use Plan contains the boundaries of the urban development area and Sew and Water Service Area, and that is what is being proposed to be amended here. 83 acres in total. It's immediately adjacent to the existing Sew and Water Service Area in this location. And of course, that covers the existing Admiral Byrd Middle School and Evendale Elementary School. To draw your attention to the map behind you on the screen, I think we can highlight in red there the location of the fourth high school where that will be constructed. Immediately to the north of it, you can see, if you will, the green boundary that depicts the existing Sew and Water Service Area. And in that northern area too, you can see the existing Admiral Byrd Middle School and Evendale Elementary School. So again, the property for which the school is requesting the Sew and Water Service Area to be around is highlighted there in red. As it is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, we wanted to make sure, of course, that it was consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So when looking at the county's Long Range Land Use Plan in that area, it's the Senson East and Frederick Urban Area Plan that is in that area. And of course, it's within an area that's identified for future development as part of and in conjunction with an urban center in that location. Of course, adjacent to the existing institutional land use designation. What staff did, and it's depicted on the screen to your left and part of your agenda, is expand the Sew and Water Service Area solely around the highlighted red property that we looked at previously. And that's what's reflected there on the screen to your left. And again, relatively straightforward addition to an existing area of water and sewer, where water and sewer is already provided to the two existing schools. And that's what you have in front of you this evening. Should you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Mr. Wayne Lee is here this evening representing Frederick County Public Schools. And of course, following a public hearing, I will be seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Ruddy? Any questions of Wayne Lee?
Thank you.
Let's see them. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this item? Well, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. So we have a need to approve, recommend, make a recommendation on this adjustment, this Swazza adjustment.
Well, I'm for it because either this, we have outhouses for the students, so I move we make a recommendation to amend the comp plan.
Second?
Oh, me. Any other discussion? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oats, yes.
Oats, yes.
Moulden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Tripplin, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This goes to the Board of Supervisors on the 10th of September. Alrighty. Our next item is an action item. It's the Master Development Plan Waiver Request for Right Renovations, Inc., submitted by Markle Arts of Martian Leg Land Surveyors, who is requesting a waiver or several of Article 5 Design Standards, 144-18A sidewalks and pedestrian walkways, 144-19 streetlights, and 144-24 lot requirements. See lot access resulting in the existing homes each being located on an individual lot. Mr. Charon?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is a kind of unique master development plan in front of you tonight. This is a master development plan to allow for three lots. The property's located in the Red Bud Magisterial District. The current zoning of the properties and part of this master development plan for the waiver are RP residential performance, and their uses are residential. The adjoining properties are also zoned residential. It's a location map of where the subdivision waiver request or master plan and the waivers for the sidewalks and streets and access requests, which I'll get into while we're looking at this waiver. And also, at the end of the presentation, I'll have the end product to walk you through it. This is more or less of a cleanup exercise because you have two houses currently on one piece of property in this configuration. We're just trying to break that apart. The waivers, as you pointed out, Madam Chairman, are for curb and gutters. And the reason the waiver request for one of the waivers that's six that are here is the surrounding lots in this subdivision, in this area do not have any curb and gutter. Sidewalks, same thing, the surrounding properties, again, for the record, the applicant's looking to have that waived because, again, the properties adjacent to it and around it do not have sidewalks. Same with the streetlights, as the ordinance requires the single-family small lots and also in our residential performance districts that we have streetlights. There's no streetlights located anywhere in this vicinity. And the lot access is pointed out, one of the lots, and I'll show you on the final plat with the waiver request, is actually serving 103 Anderson Avenue, which is a private right of way. And I'll explain that. It has been on the books as a private right of ways probably since the '60s. It's not a public road. And finally, the recreation facilities, there is no homeowners association to support or maintain any recreational facilities. Again, as this board is well aware of, its commission, I should say, is well aware of that you in RP zoning district have to have some recreation requirements. And finally, there's no open space. The surrounding areas, it's not having any open space. Again, neighborhood is an older neighborhood that did not ever have open space. One of the things why this is brought forward, we, as you know, that the staff can administratively, under some criteria, waive the master development plans. However, for the lot sizes that you're seeing tonight, these are, this would be capable to a single-family small scenario, that cannot be waived administratively, so it has to go to the Board of Supervisors. Basically, what you're seeing through your screen on the left is a three-lot configuration. What had happened was that the lots that are facing Dalj Circle, Lot 2A was an existing lot, already has a house built on it. 132 Dalj Circle, which is 1A, actually has a permanent dwelling on it. And currently, the property, the property currently sits like this, it has the two lots. The yellow line just shows you what it's looking like, what it looks like today. And there's two houses that the, one dwelling is on Anderson Avenue, and one is on Dalj Circle. The property, it's 2A, and I'm going to draw the line here, that line is gone, is one property. So for this to happen, the BZA looked at it for lot size, which they have to do under ordinance, also for the setback requirements. Again, it was a cleanup exercise. The lot at 103, the address for the dwelling at 103 Anderson Avenue has an encroachment. That encroachment has to be taken care of before subdivision can be approved, as you, I think, are well aware of. So in order for this to happen, that's what the subdivision has to look like for that to happen, okay? So with that, Mr. Mike Arts is here to answer any questions that you may have on this proposed, or excuse me, on this waiver request of the master development plan for these lots located for the rights renovation located on Dalj Circle and Anderson Avenue. Madam Chairman, I'll try to answer some of the questions you may or may not have. Again, Michael Arts is here for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Charon?
Yes.
You said that Anderson Avenue is a private right of way?
That's correct.
And how does that work as far as snow removal and repaving? I mean, who's responsible for that?
That's a good question. Actually, I think everyone on that street.
They just throw in, pitch in?
That's all I can tell you on that, Mr. Manuel.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone would like to, Mr. Arts, would you like to make any comment to us or answer any questions?
Mike Arts, Martian Leg Land Surveyors, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. It's good to see you all again. It's been a long time, and it's nice to see your smiling faces. This is a cleanup exercise. There are two lots currently existing. One lot is completely fronting on Dalj Circle, and the other lot is a corner lot. It fronts on Dalj Circle and Anderson Avenue. And the lot on Anderson Avenue has two houses on it. And all we're really trying to do is to separate those two houses into one lot. And we end up with three lots because we're going to take the adjoining lot and do a boundary line adjustment to take care of the encroachment. So that's pretty much what's going to, the plat that you saw here just a few minutes ago that Mr. Charon had up on the screen, is what we intend for the final product to look like. Three houses on three individual lots. I would like to make one quick note that we, I have received confirmation from Kelly Henshaw at the City of Winchester that she has no issues with the subdivision of this property. So that's going to be the sewer and the water for these parcels. And I've also gotten confirmation from Virginia Department of Transportation that they have no issues with the subdivision. So basically, we're looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to go to the Board. So if anybody has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Don't see one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back up there again, let us look at it. Do you have three houses or three different houses?
Yes, sir. There are three houses.
Can you pinpoint them for me? I'm not sure if I understand how they're laid.
It's the best way to do that. Go up there. Right here, it's alright.
I'm with you now. I see it, okay.
You got it, Mr. Unger?
Yeah, I see it now.
Okay.
Excuse me. When you go to the previous screen you had there, Mark, and I guess Robert and I, we see three structures on the one side, the previous screen. Where, then now we've got them in a different location, it looks like.
You're talking about this one? Yeah.
Is he adding a house? Is he going to be building a new house?
Actually, no. What had happened was, this is the, let me...
I guess, because it doesn't seem to match up, but...
Right. Now, I'm going to explain it to you right this second. Right here, that actually, on our tax map, at the time when we took this overlay, was there was actually two lots. It wasn't showing up in our tax records, two lots. There's no house that you see on it now, Mr. Kenny. The house that you're talking about, you're not seeing, is a separate parcel, separate lot. It was built separately and not attached to have three houses there. And I'm going to show you again on this, real quick, on the end product here, as Mike Arts was pointing at, that this house, this is how the property looks today.
Okay.
And it's two separate lots, so that's what you're looking at.
Yeah. I guess it was the difference in the previous screen and that one is the one, yeah.
Well, Mr. Kenny, the photograph was an older photograph, and the house got built after. And that third structure, one in the middle, was actually a garage that got tore down.
Okay, okay. That explains it, yeah. It just looked like we were doing something new. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
So we're talking about three houses on three lots that already exist?
No, we got three houses on two lots.
Two lots.
With three houses. Sorry, I've seen this thing because I was on the Board of, or I am on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We hashed it out last month. And it's, yeah, to get this accomplished, to get each house on its own lot, there's a lot of waivers and variances had to be done to make sure they're all legal. So like Mark said, it's kind of a cleanup exercise, just to make sure each house has its own lot in there, and it's an old subdivision that was a mess. Pretty convoluted to get it all straightened out.
Well, Madam Chair, unless there are any other comments or questions, I agree, it does seem to be a cleanup exercise and a necessary one at that. So I would recommend approval of the requested waivers for Right Renovations Incorporated.
Any further discussion? Okay. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Moulden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Tripplin, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will also go to the Board on September, my golly, the 10th. Okay. Our next item is information slash discussion item, and it deals with the landscaping requirements, which are revisions to Frederick County zoning ordinance to modify these requirements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The next three items we have are ordinance discussions, so we're looking for your comments, and then we'll carry it on to the Board and share with them. The landscaping requirement ordinance is something we've been talking about for, I guess you all were introduced it six, eight months ago. Staff's been working with the Business Friendly Committee for a couple of years on it. What was brought to you back in the spring was an ordinance amendment that essentially didn't modify the landscaping requirements, but cleaned up where the requirements were placed. So basically, the parking lot landscaping got put into landscaping section where people thought it belonged. We held a discussion with you on April 2nd, Staff and Planning Commission. The commission felt like that change was okay, but they felt like we ought to be looking for some other changes. So went back to committee. And the committee met at the end of April, talked, listened to the presentation from the Business Friendly Representatives, and then modified the ordinance through various other discussions to include a minor site plan requirement provision. But it also, in that minor site plan requirement, it allowed for the zoning administrator to determine what the appropriate landscaping would be when you're doing a minor site plan. And the flexibility there is if you're doing a minor change to your business industrial use, you may not have to do any landscaping. You may not have to build any new parking, and therefore, the zoning administrator has the ability to waive those requirements based on that particular minor site plan change. So that's essentially been the change to this landscaping since you saw it back in With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The DRC Development Rules and Regulations Committee saw this in June and has forwarded their recommendations to you. And with your comments, we'll take it on to the Board.
Comments to go on to the Board?
One thing Mr. Gruden mentioned was about having to landscape your entire lot if you had on a 100-square-foot air conditioner or generator. And we've got it in here where it's, the improvements would be proportional. So if you had 100 by 100, or excuse me, 100-square-foot building next to a 200,000-square-foot building, you're not even required to have a tree because proportionally, it's just not enough to, you know, tip the scales. But one thing I would like to see is, I guess on number 16, where it says any other information determined by the zoning administrator necessary for the review, or maybe add on number 17 that the zoning administrator may delete any of the above criteria on a site, or on a minor plan if it's not warranted. I've done a few where it's really something minor, and putting together some of this information just really wouldn't be necessary.
Yeah. I think it makes sense. Up until this time, we have had a minor site plan process. It just wasn't codified.
Right.
It was a common sense approach. So now it's being codified. We ought to provide that flexibility that you're suggesting. So adding a 17th condition that provides that flexibility, I think, is appropriate.
Yeah. Most of the minors I've done, a lot of that's listed in here, I've shown, but... Most of the minors I've done, a lot of that's, that's listed in here, I've shown, but there's a few times where some of that wasn't shown or wasn't necessary, so, yeah, if we just have that flexibility, that zoning administrator can waive any of the above conditions.
Yeah, because part of, up until this point, when extremely minor things came in, but the ordinance said you had to do a site plan, we would do an interpretation that the site plan was really a very minor, dumbed-down version to satisfy the site plan requirements, but not be outrageous. So I think what Gary's saying is essentially what we've always been doing, so we can certainly add that as a condition. Are there any other...
Any other comments, suggestions? Don't see them.
Okay, thank you. We'll share that with the board of supervisors.
Our next item is also an information discussion item. It's on zoning district buffer waiver option, and that's revision to the county, Frederick County zoning ordinance to allow a zoning district buffer waiver when the plan used showed in the comprehensive plan is compatible.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to need to recuse myself from the next two items. While I brought these forward to DRC, not on behalf of any potential, or existing client, but I have run into these instances in the past, and I can see it coming in the future, so it could be slightly construed that I could benefit from this, so, safe and sorry, I'll recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. This buffer waiver discussion, we were approached with scenarios where people are doing development on the property, and we have zoning district buffers, we have buffers to separate, typically, it's a commercial industrial use from an adjacent residential property, and the ordinance requires you put in buffers to help protect and lessen the impacts. What we have found is there are situations where you've got a commercially-zoned property, it's the best example I could come up with, but you've got a commercially-zoned property which is adjacent to rural areas, RA zone property, that has a house on it. The property owner of the rural areas property says, "I don't care if you have a buffer or not, because I plan on rezoning my property at some point in the future to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, so I want to be, be too eventually." So if you, if the neighbor installs the required buffer, ultimately, whether it's a year or 10 years down the road, it's going to be a buffer in the middle of a commercial zone. So what the ordinance amendment that we're talking about now is, if the adjacent property owner agrees, so we need something in writing from the adjacent property owner, and the adjacent property, through comprehensive planning, would be consistent with your zoning, so both, both sites in this case would be business use down the road, that should qualify for a waiver. So that's essentially what we're looking for. It's, I don't think we would have it that often, but certainly, we have had, in current, I guess encountered over the years where the ordinance was requiring buffers, where both the developer and the adjacent property owner preferred not to have a buffer, and this would provide a little flexibility in that scenario. So that's where this item proposal is. The DRC, the RRC reviewed this in June and has forwarded this ordinance to you for your discussion and consideration. And it is a discussion, so anything you can offer, we'll share with the board of supervisors as we move it forward.
Any comments?
Eric, the only thing I could say, Madam Chair, if I could, is that I think it's a great idea, anything we can do to lessen impact and lessen, you know, that, and we got an agreement that something we can work with, that this can be enforceable, I'm all for it. And reduce the amount of buffers that we sometimes run into as developers, and it's a good idea.
More, most of the time, when commercial uses are developing next to residential, you clearly want to have that buffer. And the few occasions where the individual lives in that residence says, "I expect to tear my house down and redevelop it at some point," that's where this would apply.
Good idea.
Yes, Mr. Thomas?
On the surface, this sounds like a great idea, and I agree with it, but I have to believe there's something that's going to come back and bite us on this. Question of the staff, should we have a standard agreement that the two property owners would have to sign, so that we don't end up with a multitude of every different lawyer has their different format that they use? I mean, should we come up some, should we come up with something that somehow protects the county from getting caught in the middle of this, when, you know, they're friends today, they signed the agreement, and six months later, they hate each other, and, you know, we end up, they end up in court, and they're in front of us complaining? Is there some way, I mean, I don't know that we can prevent that, but should we have some kind of a standard agreement that would bind both parties, instead of, you know, just letting it wide open?
We can try, and hopefully, they will use that form. I'm not sure we would necessarily be able to turn them down if what they came up with looks like it's an agreement, but we can certainly try. It's not a bad idea.
Okay, thank you.
Any other suggestions? Yes, Mr. Unger.
Comment about that, when we talked about this, I was assuming that if it does go down, there would be something in writing, so it wouldn't bite us later on. I mean, I'd certainly think there'd be something in writing in respect to that.
From a staff perspective, I think our, our application of this, the interpretation of the ordinance, would simply say, if you came to me and asked for a waiver, I'd say, I want you and, I want both property owners to sign that request. So, you know, we don't have a standard application for waiver, but the letter we would ask you to provide to us would have both properties identified and both property owners signaried on it. We could take it as far as and have it notarized, too, but the idea is, they would be acknowledging that this request has been made.
Then if the property's sold two years from then, and someone buys it and lives in that house, they know, on record, that there doesn't have to be a buffer there. It's been sold that way.
I don't think it would be on record, though, because it would simply be paper trail that we hold in our office before we process the waiver request, so title search isn't necessarily going to find that.
That would be my only real concern with this, is simply that with the transitions of properties that are bound to happen, you know, despite, you know, two neighbors that might get along and share a vision, if you will, but if the properties change hands, the only way for a subsequent buyer to really find out, I mean, despite the fact that it is good citizens and buyers, they should come check with their planning department before they buy. It's a public service announcement. But the only way they'd find that out is, is through a title search, and if it's not recorded in the land records, you know, they may buy it, and then all of a sudden, we've got an issue, or staff has an issue down the road with, you know, why isn't this buffer here? I've got impacts that need to be mitigated. So I think that's a good comment from Greg.
Why don't we do it now that it has to be recorded?
Yeah.
Well, I think there's also an approach that it's, it's buyer beware. If the, if the waiver's granted, the commercial activity's developed, and there's no buffer, and you buy the property adjacent to it, there wasn't a buffer when you bought the property. The concern is if the property changes before the, the construction occurs, and maybe that's a situation where, maybe a timeframe, you know, you have to, you get the board's approval, you've got so much time to implement, or not implement the buffer, but implement the construction activity, so everybody knows something's happening. These are excellent comments, because that's something we'll, we'll try to figure out if there's a way to, to make sure that the adjacent property owners, and future property owners, know what the waiver is. Obviously, and there was a mention earlier with the BZA, through various process, whether it's legislative and board of supervisor actions, or BZA, there's always actions and decisions that are made that are part of the county record, they're not part of the courthouse record. So you, it's always buyer beware wherever you are, because the courthouse isn't going to tell you what the zoning is in the property next door to you. So it looks vacant, it looks like a farm, but actually, it's been zoned for industrial commercial use. That's buyer beware. You've got to find that on your own.
May I, may I suggest that you've used the word of commercial? And I think in the DRC, that conversation was dealing with commercial. But we haven't said it's only for commercial in this discussion. And so are we talking about neighbors in a residential area, or are we talking about...
Typically, the buffer, the section, the ordinance that this is installed in, is where the buffers are required between zoning districts and between uses. So that, that's, I think that's where it would occur. But I can certainly, as we're processing the discussion, I'll make sure that's, that's accurate, and I'll, I'll convey those concerns to the board also.
Yes.
Well, and it's just a comment, I just wanted to say that I agree with Mr. Kenny that any flexibility we can provide in our ordinances relative to buffers is good. You know, so it seems to me it's really working out the details, and especially as we move toward, you know, trying to mix uses and more of future development, I think the more flexibility, the better. So it's definitely a good amendment, it's a good start.
The most important aspect of this that we probably haven't dwelled on is, you have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So if the county's vision is, we say business, but if the county's vision is that this isn't residential, this isn't rural forever, it's, it's envisioned for commercial, that's where this waiver opportunity would apply. So it's not, it's not going to show up in the middle of a residential subdivision, because we probably, if we're seeing transition in these lots, it's because the comprehensive plan calls for something more intensive than residential development there. Okay?
Okay. The next item is also an information discussion item, and it is on a, excuse me, it's on screening requirements for outdoor storage areas, and this is also revision to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Lawrence?
And it's quite simply, this is a ordinance proposal where if you've got two different property owners that both use, both properties have outdoor storage, currently, our ordinance says you have to enclose both of those outdoor storage areas with a screening mechanism. And the proposal is, if you've got two outdoor storage areas that are adjacent to each other, why screen between the two of them? That's essentially what the ordinance says. Through some of the discussion leading in today, one I just want to share with you is, one of the concerns that was presented to us is if, okay, if you grant this, this allowance, so you don't have to put the screening between two separate properties, outdoor storage, what if one of those properties wants to develop and re, or redevelop and eliminate the outdoor storage and have a more productive use of the land, now they don't have any screening against their neighbor? So it's, it's one of the downsides of, you know, planning for the future. It might work today, it might be a problem in the future. So I just wanted to share that with you, because that was actually shared from, by a planning commission member who wasn't able to be here today, so I wanted to carry along his thoughts. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, or hear any, take any comments regarding this ordinance amendment. Again, we'll share it with the board of supervisors at a discussion with them.
Eric, we've struggled with this for a long time in the development world, especially in the industrial areas. And your concern, as you said there, about redeveloping that land from outdoor storage to usable property, you're still got to remember, you're still probably in an M1 or M2 district where this comes into play more so than not. It gets to be redundant when you go to some of these industrial parks, and you see what is being required out there, and, and you have to question why, because sometimes you get as much as 12-foot wide strips of trees with chain-link fence in between them. It just seems so redundant, what we're doing out there. It could be a concern if you redevelop, sold that properties, but, you know, been in this for a long time, I don't see that ever happen very much. It just doesn't seem to, once those structures are what they are and what they're being used for, it doesn't change over very often. It's either long-term investments or lease-back type of situation, so it's a concern, but I don't know if it's enough concern to mitigate what this would do to benefit, you know, the change.
Benefits outweigh...
That benefits outweigh the one possibility that may happen down the road.
If we take that one step farther, and if the property use did change, the property that was converted to a different use would then have the requirement to put the screening on their property.
Yeah.
So in essence, we would get one screen anyhow.
That's correct.
So in that individual, it changed uses, really would lose nothing, because if it would have been built originally, the screen would have been there. So yes, he'd have to pay for the screen, but he still has the same amount of property.
That's correct.
So I, I don't know that, that one does, this one doesn't concern me as much as the one before, so I, I think this, I mean, they still have the screening from site, from roads and other non-similar uses, so I think this one kind of makes sense.
He wouldn't, the new development wouldn't be required to screen it, but he could screen it if he so chose, and...
If he found a defense.
If he didn't have this ordinance, he would have paid to screen it many years ago. So it's his cost, yeah.
Anything else?
That was my comment. Roger, did it right.
All righty, I think you've got some stuff to take.
I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. We do not have a planning commission regular agenda for September 3rd, so we will cancel that meeting. But we are going to use that time for staff to hold a briefing on a complex application that will be coming before us, and the board of supervisors will be asked to join us on the evening of September 3rd at 7:00 in this room. Now, we need to cancel the meeting, do we not?
So you're canceling your regular meeting, but we will be holding the staff briefing here, so you do still have to meet with us.
Yes.
So what are we going to be doing at that meeting?
We're going to settle like ours, huh?
In the afternoon or evening, Eric?
7:00 p.m. Same time, same place.
Everybody okay?
Still up here with Dove, huh?
So do we need a motion to cancel the meeting? I think so.
You're canceling the meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
If we cancel the meeting on the 3rd of September and replace it with a work session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you all very much. I think all we need to do is adjourn ourselves.
Second?
Didn't she say?
All in favor?
Uh, all right.
Say the 3rd.